Well, good evening. Welcome back to church. Let me ask you to turn in your Bibles to Hebrews, Chapter 12, Hebrews, Chapter 12, Verses 2 to 3. This is not a sermon tonight. This is a town hall meeting. It is going to be a state of the church, which in many ways will be like a presidential state of the union. It'll be long and boring. But, bring it on, okay. But you've liked the State of the Union. You've got to watch because there's nothing else on because you don't want to find out from your friends tomorrow that you missed something important. So, nothing for it but to soldier on. So this is not a sermon. This is an update on a lot of things that have been going on in the life of our church since September the 8th, when you as a church gave us the legal authority to take actions that we needed to take in order to make those plans a reality. Most of the work we've been doing has been behind the scenes, in meetings with attorneys, with bankers, with brokers, and not the kind of work that we could give a regular update on. So we needed to make progress before we could do that and then get on the other side of Christmas. And so this is the first time that we've really been able to give you kind of a full-throated update on where we are and what's going on. So, so this is not a sermon. It's an update. And yet I want to frame what we talk about tonight with a few thoughts from Scripture. And so I want to start with Hebrews, Chapter 12, Verses 2 to 3. And this is what God says. "Fixing our eyes on Jesus, the Author and Perfector of our faith, who for the joy set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, and has set down at the right hand of the throne of God; for consider him, who has endured such hostility by sinners against himself, so that you will not grow weary and lose heart." In the Book of Hebrews, the author of the book is writing to a group of Hebrews, a group of Jewish Christians who have fallen on hard times. We don't know exactly what the details were of the difficulties that they were facing, but there is so much instruction in the book about how to deal with difficulty. It's clear that he's writing to give an encouragement to people who were struggling at that point. And what he does here as he nears the end of the book is he tells us to do something. He tells us that we need to fix our eyes on Jesus. In the midst of difficulty, in the midst of turmoil, in the midst of heaven knows what kind of pain and suffering they were experiencing at the moment, he doesn't feel any need to provide the details of the trouble they're facing. But he does feel a profound need to provide the details of the person on whom they need to focus. And he says they need to focus on Jesus. This is a reminder, not just for the first century Hebrews, but for the 21st century Christians at Jacksonville, that the reason we exist as a church is to fix our eyes on Jesus. We are here so that we would grow in Jesus Christ. We are here so that a city would be introduced to Jesus Christ. We have no other purpose. We have no other aim. We have no other interest but that people would know Jesus and love Him. That's a reminder we need even when we're here at a town hall meeting and maybe especially when we're here to talk at a town hall meeting. So this is a text that reminds us of who we are and what we're supposed to be doing. But it's also a text that reminds us that there are two sides to faithfulness. If you're going to be faithful as a Christian, if you're going to be faithful as a church, and if you're going to focus on Jesus Christ, if you're going to preach the Word in season and out of season, then there's two sides to that kind of faithfulness. There is the difficult side of faithfulness where you are sowing, where you're working hard, where you're sweating. And then there is the joyful side of faithfulness where you reap the benefits and enjoy the reward. The Bible says that Jesus experienced the difficult side of faithfulness. No human being in the history of the universe has ever been more faithful and more obedient to God than Jesus was as He gave up His breath on the cross and shed His blood to die for sinners like you and me, so that when we repent of our sins and trust in Him, we can have life forever. He poured out His blood in the difficult side of faithfulness. It was a hard season. It was a desperate season. It was so desperate and difficult that in the lead-up to it, as He prayed for grace and strength to pull the whole thing off, He sweat drops of blood as He thought about enduring it. How did He do it? How did He make it on the other side of the cross? Well, Hebrews says that we're to fix our eyes on this Jesus, the Author and Perfector of our faith, who for the joy set before him endured the cross. The way you get on the other side of difficulty, the way you get through the hard part of faithfulness is to look past the difficulty and see the joy that is coming on the joyful side of faithfulness. That's the way Jesus endured the cross, and that becomes an example for us. We are supposed to fix our eyes on Jesus when we're in difficult moments and do what He did. We're supposed to look past the pain and to the joy so that we won't lose heart. That's what the text says. "Consider Him." Think about Jesus. "Consider Jesus, who has endured such hostility by sinners against himself, so that you won't grow weary and lose heart." There is a threat in the Christian life that you'll grow weary and lose heart. And when you get to that point, the Bible says to consider Jesus, to think about Him who endured far more difficulty than we ever will, and to think about how He did it. He did it by looking past the difficult side of faithfulness to the joyful side of faithfulness. First Baptist Church has been in a remarkable season of change, a remarkable season of transition, nearly unheard of in the history of our church. I want you to know as we move into 2020, as we sit here looking forward to everything this year has to offer, I want you to know that 2020 will still have us be in the difficult side of faithfulness. We have a lot of challenges that are facing us. We have a lot of challenges we have to get on the other side of. I want you to know that I made a decision some time ago as the pastor of the church that there was nothing to do but just embrace that fact. There was nothing to do except to embrace the fact that in order to get to the joyful, fruitful side of faithfulness, we're just going to have to embrace the difficult side of faithfulness for a season. I also made the decision that one of the most important things I can do for you is to tell you the truth, to tell you the truth about where we are as a church, to tell you the truth about what is going on, and to tell you the truth about what the plans are for the future. And so one of the most important things that I can do in my life and in my ministry as I serve you is to just be very, very honest with you about where we are. I have sought to do that. I will seek to do that tonight. And it is my ambition to do that for the foreseeable future. Because some of the truth about where we are is hard and challenging, I have also sought your prayers. In fact, I want to remind you for those of you who might not have been here, on November 24th, Sunday night, November the 24th, I preached a sermon called "Pleading Grace." It was the conclusion of a series of sermons on the different manifestations of grace that we read about in the Old and the New Testament. "Pleading Grace," on November 24th, Sunday night. And what I did was I spoke in that sermon about the five mountains that we need God to move in the year ahead. Five challenges that are too big for any pastor, five challenges that are too big for any church, five mountains that if God doesn't move, they'll sit right there. But we believe in a God who moves mountains. And I said to you then, and I said to you before that, and I'll say to you now, that on the other side of this difficult season of faithfulness, I don't know all the details about where we'll be and what all that will look like, but if you tell me that we grew as a church that prayed together, if we grew as a church that depended on the grace of God to do for us what we can't do for ourselves, then whatever the details look like in '21, I'm going to be really excited about that. One of the mountains that I shared with you that God needs to move is that we need wisdom for our leaders and flexibility for our people. I need you to be praying for wisdom for me and the pastoral leadership and the lay leadership who are working together on these solutions. And I need you to pray for flexibility for yourselves. And so in a season of difficulty, in a season of hardship, in a season of transition, I want to just remind us to be praying for one another, praying for our leaders that they'll have wisdom and praying for flexibility. With that in mind, let me give you a few items of report about the state of our church. First of all, it's just, it's good that I remind you how we got here. So on September the 8th, if you want to boil it all down, what our church decided to do, what we agreed would be the path forward is that 20 years of decline in our church was more than enough. That we did not want to be a church in decline, that we wanted to be a church that was embracing the future and making investments in ministry. We want to be a church that is effective in reaching Jacksonville with the gospel of Jesus Christ and growing up in the wisdom and love of Jesus as a church. In order to do that though, we have to deal with a significant financial and physical plant problem. And that is that we cannot afford the $72 million in maintenance bills that are confronting us between now and 2025. And so our church decided to do all of our ministry on one block, reducing our physical plant downtown by 90% onto space that we can afford, and to invest $30 million in that block, which is a lot more strategic and a lot more affordable than the $72 million that nobody has. And so essentially what we're doing is we are deciding to be a church that is not focused on maintenance, but is focused on ministry. And in order to do that, we have to learn to live within our means. And so really, one way to think about this town hall and this update is the update I'm giving you on our progress to live within our means as a church, to have physical plant and all the rest that we can afford. First item of report. We've talked about this in here before, but the first thing I need to share with you is the progress on our reduction in force. We have had to conclude as a church that we are dramatically overstaffed. The industry standard for a church our size is, a church our size needs about 40 full-time ministry staff. Our church has 200 employees. It's nearly, it's over 400% kind of the industry standard on a church our size. Just like our facilities budget, our personnel budget is not sustainable for a church our size. We, some of us on the senior staff had dinner some nights ago with a ministry leader, who, a well-known leader in evangelicalism, whose ministry has a $50 million budget. And I asked this ministry leader on his $50 million budget, how many personnel they had. And he said 120. Well, we have 200 personnel on a $13 million budget. These numbers just don't work. And this isn't new. I want you to know that what we're doing is not this new radical thing. This has been a problem with our staff for some time. And what I mean by that is that the staff at First Baptist Church has not had a raise now in 13 years. No cost of living increases at First Baptist Church in 13 years. I want you to imagine what it'd be like in your life, at your work, if for 13 years you'd lived with no cost of living increase. That's just bad stewardship. That means we've known for 13 years that we can't afford what we've got, but we haven't wanted to make the hard decisions because nobody wants to make these kinds of decisions because they're the worst decisions ever. There will be another vector. In 2008, First Baptist Church stopped making retirement contributions to its employees. And every year since 2008, we say we're going to try to give it back this year. And every year since 2008, we haven't been able to do it. So since 2008, we haven't even been able to make retirement contributions, some retirement contributions which, when people were hired, we said, hey, this is what we're going to do for you. And so we've had to renege on our agreements. What I want you to know is that you just can't live this way. I want to let you know also that though these decisions are hard and though they are painful, we are doing our absolute level best to accomplish these reductions in the best way possible. Several months ago, last fall, I announced to all of our staff that these reductions were coming, that they'd be coming in the first quarter of this year at the latest. And that is a risky move. That's not what they tell you to do. They tell you to be quick, dark, and silent. But as I said to them, I felt duty-bound to give you warning. I don't want anybody to be caught off-guard and find out that their whole life is being rearranged because of a decision-making process that they weren't aware of. And so we gave warning to our staff that, hey, these are decisions that we are going to have to make. We don't want to make them, but we have to make them. And we realized that there's going to be people who would hear this and go find other jobs, and they might be people that we'd like to keep. But that is a risk I felt like we needed to be willing to take because we want to treat people well. And so we've given months and months of warning for this. I also want you to know that most of the legal realities as we work very closely with labor attorneys to be sure we're doing this well and honorably and in a way that's in keeping with the law. So many of the laws that apply to these sorts of reductions don't apply to us because of various realities about the fact that we are a church. But I still want you to know that in every case we have and are planning to surpass every legal standard so that the people who have served us are treated as graciously and as well as we can as we move in a different direction together. I want to let you know that this is going to require some commitments on your part. We've had a number of ministry leaders, well-known ministry leaders, leaders of successful ministries come in and talk with us and look at our books and look at our personnel and tell us how we're doing. And the people who have come in here, one of the things that they have said to me when we've gotten off alone after they've done their evaluation is, one guy in particular, pastor of a very large church out west, said, "I know your church is dying because I see your personnel numbers." What is a church this size doing with this many staff? And the point he made is that dying churches hire people to do things growing churches get volunteers for. I'm saying that to you because ministry has to happen in this church. But the ministers in this church are the people in this room. You are the ones that God is raising up for ministry. And so we are going to be making appeals to you, and we've made appeals already, to stand in the gap and let's be a church that's ministering to one another and growing in faithfulness together and not have to be a church that is hiring out all the ministry. You know that you go broke doing that. I also want to let you know as I talk about this, about my heart in the whole process and about my gratitude for the people who work here. Nobody wants to do this. I don't want to do it. A reduction in force, layoffs, are not about who you want to keep. They are about who you can afford to keep. And if it is true, if it is true that I have made a commitment to you that I will tell you the truth, and if I make a further commitment that I won't leave because the work is too hard, then the reality is there's nobody left to pass the buck to but me. And so somebody has to make these decisions. And I don't want to be the one, but I keep looking around for a line of people who are going to do it after me, and I don't see anybody standing there. Listen, I'm telling you... I'm telling you that this is the hardest thing I have ever had to do. I'm telling you that as I work with members of the senior staff on this, I think I can speak for them when I say that this is the hardest thing that they have ever had to do. But at the end of the day, this is not a good place to work. When you can't give raises, when you can't provide benefits, this is not a good place to work. And my responsibility to this staff, if I have a responsibility at all, is to make sure that it's a good place to work. And so I am begging you for a couple of things. I am begging you for your patience on this. I am, look, church staffs are the hardest staffs in the world to think about reductions in force because every staff member has somebody that they have loved, has somebody that they've touched, has somebody that they've cared for. And every single decision that we will make, every single decision that I will make is painful and is a loss. And if there was any other way to do it, I would do it. If there was a way to invent money, I would do it. But it's the fact that I happen to be sitting in this chair when the bill from the piper has come due. And I'm just, I'm pleading with you for your patience as we make the hardest decisions that it's possible to make. And I'm pleading with you for something else, that you would show gratitude to the people who have served well, who have served faithfully, who have done nothing wrong. Reductions in force are also not about wrongdoing. They're about honesty about what we can afford and what we can't afford. And so I am asking you to show profound gratitude to the people who have served faithfully, who have served at a loss of their own resources. No salary increases for 13 years. We did the math. It's something like a pay cut of 7%. They've essentially endured pay cut after pay cut after pay cut in terms of buying power. So I want you to be willing to show gratitude to these pastors, to these ministry leaders, to these staff people who haven't done anything wrong, but it's just time to be honest and stop pretending. In the vein of gratitude and in the vein of showing gratitude to pastors in a little bit of a different direction than personnel, I want to let you know as a family matter as we are here together, one of the things that our church has done for decades to show gratitude for pastors, not just the pastors here, but pastors all over the world, is we have had the Jacksonville Pastors Conference. We are looking forward to that here in about a week and a half. We're going to have incredible and godly men from all over the place to come and speak. We're going to have incredible and godly women to come and speak at our women's conference, and this is going to be very exciting. I want to let you know as a family matter before we make that announcement at the pastors' conference in a week and a half, that in '21, we will not host the pastors' conference. We'll be under construction. We're going to be totally renovated. We're going to have everything in the world going on. And there is no possible way for us to plan where to put anybody while we're under that kind of construction. So we'll be making that announcement to the attendees at the conference, but I wanted you to hear about it from me first. Also, in the vein of gratitude for pastors, we have had, in the end of last year and just within the first couple of weeks of this year, the sad opportunity to say farewell to four pastors who have served us well and faithfully. David Klimtner, Angel Santiago, Steve McCollum, and John Fuller. And I saw them in here. Would you guys stand up? I hate to embarrass you, but would you stand up? Each one good, godly, faithful servants of Christ and of this flock. And we are really excited that after the town hall meeting and the deacon ordination tonight in the dining room, we're going to have a special reception to say thank you to each one of them. So we are so grateful for each of the four of you and for your honorable and distinctive service. And we love you and are very grateful for what you did for our church and for Jesus Christ while you're here. Thank you very much. Okay, that is, that's it on personnel. Let me talk about property close and loan progress for a little bit. On September the 8th, you gave us permission, me and the trustees, you gave us permission to borrow up to $30 million to accomplish the work of renovation and construction on the Hobson Block to accommodate us on our new facilities. I want to let you know that right now today, we are looking at a date in early February. These things take a lot of time to work out. But we are working on a date in early February to close on a $15 million loan. So you gave us permission to borrow up to 30. You didn't tell us that we had to borrow 30. You gave us permission to borrow up to that. And we are going to start with 15 and see about producing the rest of the money we need for the building in other ways. I bet you know what some of those other ways are. We're going to be talking about how you can be faithful to contribute to this. And we're going to be looking at other avenues to generate this money as well, not the least of which is property sale, which I'll be talking about in just a moment. But we're going to start with 15 and see how far we can get on that. This is, this has taken a remarkable amount of work. It's taken a remarkable amount of legwork with various banks, with various of our staff people, with a number of our trustees. And you can be praying that first couple of days of February we will be able to close on that loan. Also, on property close, we have contracted with CBRE. CBRE, that is an international land brokerage. Depending on who you talk to, they're the best in the business. And we are really excited about the partnership we have with them as they take all of our property to market. Right now, so this is, this is the question I get all the time. And in fact, I'll warn you. I'm very dubious about my ability to get to questions from you by the end of this because we have so much to talk about. So I peeked at the questions before I came over here. And I believe I'm answering most of them. But a lot of the questions we get are what kind of offers are... But a lot of the questions we get are what kind of offers are we getting on our land? And right now, what we're doing is we are letting CBRE handle that. They're taking it to market. They're seeing what the market will bear. And they are going to come back to us with the various offers and their recommendations about what they think is best, what they think is available, and what our next steps are. So I will also say, because some of you commented on this, there were some articles in the press about how this whole deal worked out, and I didn't read any account in the press that was accurate. I hate to say that because, and if there's a member of the media here, I'm not trying to diss anybody at all. I'm just saying I didn't read any account in the press that was accurate about our relationship with CBRE and how that happened. As a matter of fact, we've been working with CBRE since the summer, doing our due diligence on bringing this plan to you on September the 8th. We couldn't enter into a legal agreement with them until we had the authority to do that. And it took a meeting with you as the congregation, and it took some behind-the-scenes work to do that. But that arrangement has been a long time coming, and it was planned for a very, very long time. So we're really excited about CBRE and letting the people who know what they're doing do the work. And we'll give a report on that when it's ready. All right, construction. Let me also say, before I leave that, I want to remind you of the mountains we're praying for. One of the mountains we're praying for is a generous amount of money from the sale of land. I want to just keep reminding you to pray for that. There isn't anybody in this room who gets to control what the property sells for. There isn't anybody in this room who gets to control who in the world would be interested in all of this property that we have, unless you actually want to buy it, in which case you can see me after the service and we'll talk. But it's not the purview of the people in this room to control that, but God is in control of that. And so I want to ask you to just be pleading with the Lord. Lord, give us a generous amount of money on the sale of this land and make it happen quick. All right, construction. Right now, we are in the design phase. I mentioned to you that we got as far along in the design and architecture phase as we could before we had the legal authority from you to take further steps. The steps that existed after where we were on September the 8th were the really expensive ones. And so right now, we are in the design phase to plan out what will happen on the Hobson block and what the rooms will actually look like. All that is happening right now, actually. We expect to be in the demolition phase in May. So we expect that buildings over there will start to be torn down by May. And then once those buildings are torn down, then we'll start remodel of Hobson, and we will start work on the remaining building and what's the construction that's coming after that. So all that will happen after May. Now, this is another thing to pray for. None of that is under the control of anybody in this room. Construction costs aren't in the control of anybody in this room. If they find a pocket of gas in the ground when they knock a building down and it takes six months to clean it up, nobody in this room is in charge of that. We have to wait on the city to give us all sorts of approvals, to approve all kinds of permits. And there isn't anybody in this room who are on any of those committees. I know. I checked. And so we have to ask the Lord, who is the King of the universe and in charge of all those committees, of all those permits, of all those approvals, when none of this is in our control, we have to ask the Lord to do what he does and make a way. And so I want to ask you, one of the mountains that we're asking God to move is that construction would end on time and on budget. And early and under budget isn't a bad thing to pray for. And so there isn't any pastor, there isn't any trustee, there isn't any deacon, there isn't any Sunday school teacher who is in charge of making that happen, but God is. And I want to ask you to be praying about that. So where we are now is design, demolition, we're praying in May, and construction and remodel after that. That's construction. Now, relocation of our Sunday school space. This is where you don't need an update from me because I know the relocation of our Sunday school space has been something that you have felt. Today was, in fact, the deadline for you to move your personal belongings out of your Sunday school space. And we've actually talked a lot about this as a staff. I realize what we're asking in this. I realize that some of you have been in the same rooms, teaching the same people for decades. And I just want you to hear me say that I know it must be hard and painful to have to think about saying goodbye. And even though you still have weeks left in those rooms, it's got to be hard to know that there's a finality to clearing out all this stuff. I really understand that and appreciate that. And I really appreciate your cooperation as we do that, and I am praying for you. The reality is that demolition requires that we clear out. You won't want to be in there in May. And the reason we have to clear it out now and not later is because this is a crucial step of figuring out what is in there and how we need to process it all and deal with it, and what the church actually has and what we need to get rid of and what we need to keep. And so that's going to take some time in and of itself. And so the reason you're doing it now and not right before May is because we need to stay ahead of the game on this and be sure we know what we're dealing with. I want to let you know what our Sunday school plan is going to be by May. That is to say, I'm going to let you know now what our Sunday school plan is going to be come May. Every Sunday school that is across the street in the Lindsay Building and in the Hobson area and in the administration building, every single Sunday school class over there will be dislocated because of construction, because of demolition. Every single class will be dislocated. You will have to move. And I want to let you know what that's going to look like. First of all, high school will be relocated to the fourth floor of the children's building. And college and career will move to the children's building as well. After that, all of our adult Sunday school classes that currently meet across the street will relocate and become one large Sunday school class in here for a season. Now stick with me. I'll let that sink in for a moment. Every part of that statement is really important. Every Sunday school class that meets across the street, every adult Sunday school class, except what I just mentioned, high school and college and career, all of the adult Sunday school classes will become part of one large Sunday school class and will begin meeting in here for a season. Okay, let me explain that. Fellowship and activities will still happen with your Sunday school class. So we're working on a way to be sure that you can stay in contact with one another and to be sure that you still have touch with one another and you're still able to serve and pray and have relationship. We're working on that, and we'll communicate. It's not the place right now to communicate the details of that. I'll talk about that in a minute. But your fellowship and your activities with your class will still happen, but the teaching time will happen in this large room because the logistics of our square footage that's left don't permit the number of classes that we have meeting separately. So through the summer, we are working to make sure that the teaching in here is an exciting teaching time with the pastors of the church. I'll also let you know as an aside that our plan right now is that by Easter, I will no longer be teaching and preaching at Nocati, but I'll be exclusively downtown. If I'd known that was going to be an applause line, I'd have said that earlier. By Easter, I won't be preaching at Nocati anymore. I'll just be down here. And so I asked the education people if I could teach a few of the Sunday school classes, and they said they'd pray about it. So pastors will be doing the Sunday school teaching through the summer, and we think you're going to be excited about what happens. And then, in August, this is where things will change again. In August, we will no longer have worship services in the main auditorium, but we will move to two Sunday morning services in this room right here. Let's get dinner this week, you and me. We'll move to two services in this room on Sunday morning. Now, let me explain why. There's two reasons. One, the main auditorium is incredibly expensive for us to operate. Our annual utility bill, what it costs us just in utilities to meet in the main auditorium on Sunday is $300,000. $300,000 to worship in the main auditorium. And as we've already talked about, it's an 8,000-seat auditorium and too big for us. We can have 3,000 people there on Sunday morning. It looks like nobody showed up. It's like a tick in a milk jug. So we don't need to spend all that money on a room that is too big for us. And so we're going to go to two services in this room. That's the first reason to save money. Here's the second reason. When we move into the Hobson block, we will need practice with multiple services. We need to get the kinks out. And so we are going to do our trial runs by having multiple services in this room. So, back to Sunday school. In May, high school, fourth floor of the children's building, college and career in the children's building as well. All the adult Sunday school classes that meet on the Hobson block will gather for one large teaching time in this room. And through the summer, the Sunday school hour will be taught by the pastors. Then in August, we'll move to two services in here, which will mean it's not available for the Sunday school hour anymore. And so you will be broken up back into smaller subsets of Sunday school classes. But here's the really important part. We're going to have to combine Sunday school classes. Right now, I believe we have about 62 Sunday school classes that meet in that building across the street, and we will have room for 20 or so over here. So you'll go in August back to smaller Sunday school classes, but we're going to need you to be flexible again because we're going to have to combine classes. And so I'm asking you, first of all, I'm admitting I realize this is a lot to swallow. Secondly, I'm telling you, reality is what it is. Across the street is going to be a pile of rubble and no place to meet over there. So we're going to have to do this. And so the third thing is I'm pleading with you, God help us to be flexible. What is important is that we grow in Jesus and that we share Jesus. What's not important, even though it's hard, is exactly the way that we do that. And so that's a change that's coming. I gave a tour over there, actually, I was given a tour over in the Hobson Auditorium and Education Building, the Lindsay Building, by Bob Barton a couple of weeks ago. Some of you know him. And he was looking at all these rooms, and he said, "It looks so different from when I was over here." And he was saying that when he was here, the rule from Dr. Lindsay was, "Don't get used to your wall." Okay, somebody got it. "Don't get used to your wall." Because they were always having to knock walls down and move doors because things kept changing. So some of you remember a different day when "don't get used to your wall." And so that'll be a little bit of a retro message for you tonight. We're going to have to have flexibility while we're preparing for the future. You will, in the coming days, hear about the communication schedule, particularly for Sunday school teachers. You'll hear in the coming days about the communication schedule for this. We're going to meet with you. We're going to go over it in detail. We're going to give you opportunity to ask questions and have those questions be answered. So this is just a general overview. I can't possibly answer all the details. You'll get to that with pastors and ministry leaders in the days ahead. Tanya Tucker. Anybody remember who Tanya Tucker is? So she had a song that she sang called "Strong Enough to Bend." You remember that? "The tree, like a tree out in the backyard that never has been broken by the wind. Our love will last forever if we're strong enough to bend." So we're going to have to be strong enough not to crack under the weight of the transition. We're going to have to be strong enough to bend here. And that, again, draws us back to the prayer. We need wisdom for our leaders and flexibility for our people. We need God to move a mountain. We need God to make people who have a way they've been doing it for decades to feel really good about doing it in a different way for a season and then doing it in a different way for another season. God, make us flexible. All right, I said to you, there's a difficult side to faithfulness, and there's a joyful side to faithfulness. I said to you that the hard job that I have in my life is to tell you the truth about where we are. I don't like it. Nobody likes taking medicine. But that is one of the jobs that I've got. But there's another job that I've got, and it is to put the joy in front of you. It is to remind you that though we are in a season of paying bills and riding the ship, I am not here and you are not here to have it be difficult forever. I'm not here and you are not here even to have it be difficult for long. And so what I want to do is explain to you why we're doing all this, why we're moving everything around, why we're tearing everything up, why would we do all of this? And it is for the joy that is set before us. And so with that in mind, I want to let you know our five-year plan. I want to let you know where we are headed in all of this. The five-year plan, we're calling it Reach 904. Reach because we want to reach the gospel. We want to reach our community with the gospel of Jesus Christ in 904 because that's the area code of the region that we're living in. And I want to tell you our five-year plan in one statement. First Baptist will spread the gospel to the city of Jacksonville, launching one to two new campuses, equipping new pastoral leaders, establishing new lay leaders, making disciples, and having 10,000 gospel conversations. That is our goal by '25. Now, 10,000 gospel conversations isn't like, we want to have 101 or we want to have a million. We want to have 10,000 gospel conversations. We want to work together as a church to share the gospel 10,000 times as a church with the city of Jacksonville. And what I want to do for the next few moments is break down this five-year plan. By 2023, we are working on a facility strategy. We've spent a lot of time talking about that. You know that our plan is to be in there by 2021. And so we hope to beat that part of it by 2023. But also in the facility strategy, we want to have the land sold and done with and in the rearview mirror and just on property that we can afford, that looks good, that smells good, and that is effective for ministry. There's also a discipleship strategy in this. The phrase that I read talks about making disciples. We exist as a church so that we will grow in Jesus Christ. And in the months ahead, we are going to be releasing an exciting plan to have every single member of our church growing in their relationship with Jesus Christ. I laid out a challenge to the staff some months ago where I said, "I want our church to be second to none in the megachurch world in caring for individuals and seeing them grow in Jesus Christ." Megachurches have a bad reputation of doing a good job of attracting the crowd and a bad job of discipling the crowd. We want to do better than anybody else, the work of caring for your souls and seeing you grow up in Jesus and be conformed more closely to His image. And I'm excited about what we're going to be talking to you about in that regard in the months ahead. And by 2023, we're also working on a team strategy. One of the most painful realities about our staffing situation right now is that there's a lot of siloed staff. There's a lot of bad communication that happens. And a staff this big, it takes a massive amount of coordination so that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. That has been sadly missing. And our plan is to work so that in the years ahead, we have a staff that is cooperating well together and is defined by ministry synergy. We're going to be working on that. And then, by 2023, we've got a multi-site strategy. We want to launch one to two new campuses. We want to do that in the right way. We want to do that in the right way, and we've got a formula that we're already working on, that we're already putting into place, so that we get in the right areas and we staff those campuses with the right people, so that we can have healthy, growing campuses by 2023. This year, in 2020, what we're focusing on just for the next 12 months, we're viewing this as a time to establish the DNA and the direction of First Baptist Church. There is, as part of this year's focus, a transition initiative. We've already talked a lot about this, we're moving Sunday Schools, we're moving office space, we are changing staff. So there's going to be a transition initiative. This is, this is something that really you're going to be a spectator in. This is something that's going to be happening at the staff level, and will, again, the mountain to move is, "God, give wisdom to these leaders, give wisdom to me." And you can pray for us as we do this. But there are things that you can't be spectators in and that you must be involved in, and those are the next two things. First of all, is a reach initiative. Listen, for 182 years, First Baptist Church has existed to share the gospel of Jesus Christ with the city of Jacksonville. And our commitment is more than taking the medicine, it's more than paying the piper, it's more than being honest about a hard time, it is making the decisions that are required so that as long as there is a city called Jacksonville, there'll be a church called First Baptist that's sharing Jesus in it. The only way forward is forward, and the only way forward is with health and ministry strength, and that requires each one of us sharing the gospel with our friends and with our neighbors. This year, we're going to ask you to pick one local person that you can be investing in on your reach list, one local person that you can be praying for and reaching out to and seeking to have a gospel conversation. There is nothing happening in downtown Jacksonville that keeps you from sharing the gospel in your living room, at work, at school, and wherever else you happen to be. And so we're going to be working really hard on this. One of the mountains that we're praying for is, "God, give spiritual revival in Jacksonville. Move this mountain." And you can be a part of that. And then there's a preaching initiative this year. And this is another one of those mountains where we're praying that there'd be spiritual revival in our church. We want you to grow, we want you to advance in your walk with Jesus Christ. And so there's a few preaching initiatives this year. First of all, on Sunday mornings, starting in February, I'm going to be preaching a series called Focus 2020. And the point of that is that as all the physical plant is shifting around, as the Sunday School meets in different places, as you're having to travel to different places on this campus and get used to new things, what is First Baptist? It's, it's not the buildings, it's not the legacy, as rich and as important as that is, it's something far more important than those things. And every week, in the lead-up to Easter, I want to show you a very, very clear picture of who we are and what we're about. I want to give you a vision for the future of our church that will make you excited and thrilled to be a part of what's going on here. I want you to be excited and willing to endure the transition of this year to be a part of a church like who First Baptist is, Focus 2020. And then on Sunday nights, starting in February, I'm also going to be preaching a series called Love and Glory, a short sermon series through the entire Bible. So, on Sunday nights, from February to November, we can't, I don't even get the whole year, but we will start in Genesis, we will end in Revelation, and we're going to cover the Bible in between. So, if you want to know more about how the Bible fits together, if you have friends that want to know more about that, if you want to invite your friends to a Bible study that would be evangelistic and give them an overview of the whole Bible in a year, then that's Sunday nights, Love and Glory, a short sermon series through the entire Bible. That's the five-year plan. Backing up to this year and extending out to 2025, but First Baptist Church is committed to spreading the gospel to the city of Jacksonville, launching one to two new campuses, equipping new pastoral leaders, establishing new lay leaders, making disciples, and having 10,000 gospel conversations. That's where we're headed. Last thing. Lot. I've given you a lot. But I said, if we're honest about the hard things, we also have to be honest about the good things. I've just told you the good things about where we're going. I want to tell you some of the good things that we're already experiencing. First of all, First Baptist Academy. Next thing. You're already clapping, I don't want to mess it up. First Baptist Academy. One of the implications of our relocated physical plant meant that First Baptist Academy was going to have to find a new place to go. That'd been an ongoing conversation for years anyway, since a lot of us have known for a long time that the path forward for the school was to find acreage someplace that they could afford, where they could grow and build buildings and have fields. And what happened on September the 8th motivated the board and motivated Susan and their excellent leadership to do a diligent search, and God miraculously, more than anything we could have asked or thought, provided acreage off University Boulevard at the property of the Baptist Children's Home for First Baptist to relocate and grow. Listen, when I was talking to the church's Board of Trustees and the school's Board of Directors, I said, "This is the kind of thing that if we'd known about it, we'd have done it anyway." It's the kind of thing that I wish I could have stood in front of them and said, "This was my plan all along." But it wasn't. It wasn't anybody's plan, it's just a thing God did. And one of the things about looking at the past faithfulness of God is that it encourages you about the amazing breathtaking things that God is going to do in the future. Nobody saw coming dozens of acres of prime real estate for the school to grow and advance, but God just provided that thing, and He provided it actually really, really quickly, and at a price that is affordable and in a plan that makes sense. And I want you to be encouraged, and I also just want to give glory to God, that He has been faithful to us and faithful to the school, and that's a cause for celebration. Another item to celebrate is the property and the sale, the sale of property that either has already sold or is about to sell. We have sold, you have approved, the sale of three different parcels, and by early February, we will have received right over $3 million for the sale of that property. That is cash in hand that we need. The property sold, one of those parcels that we sold, every broker that we talked to said, "That's going to be the hardest piece of property you have to sell, and it could take a year or two," and it was one of the first ones we sold. That's just the Lord's provision for us. I also want to let you know about just what's happening here in the life of the church. These are days of transition in the church, but they're also exciting times in the life of our church. There's, there's encouraging financial news about where we are as a church. This December, the one we just got finished with, December of 2019, our giving was $350,000 over what it was in December of 2018. Year-to-date, I want you to think about this, year-to-date, we have received $200,000 more than we had the same time last year. Now think about that. In the midst of a season where we're, where First Baptist Church looks like the game of Boggle, where we're just shaking everything up, you are being faithful and investing in this ministry. You are being faithful and investing in this work. It is a profound encouragement to me, and I know that as you come together and hear that, it's an encouragement to all of you. I'll also tell you, just in terms of the endorsement of this plan, a radical plan, not, no small changes here, it definitely hit the Richter scale. And since September the 8th, I have talked to thousands of you, and I have talked to two people about this plan who don't like it. Two people. There are two people who matter, there are two people who are valuable before God, but I've talked to two people since September the 8th. And I have talked to thousands of you who hug me, who squeeze my face, who swat my rear end, I'm not kidding. And you say, "We love it, we are excited about the future, we're behind the church, and we're moving forward." That's remarkable. I want to actually just, just as your brother in Christ, and as the, as the one who had no plan of leading this church in such days, I don't even know how to tell you how much it means to me, when you come up and you say you're praying for me, when you come up and hug me, when you come up and you hug my kids and you hug my wife and you say that you're praying for us and that you're being supportive. These are hard days, but my goodness, it's like family. In fact, it's not like family, we are family, we're part of the family of God, we're brothers and sisters in Christ. And I'm happy to be living life with you. Another set of information that is really encouraging, every week, our average attendance in our new members' class is somewhere between 10 and 15 people every week. This year, in 2019, I should say, in 2019, we have 81 new members join with our fellowship. 81 new members in 2019. One of those members joined on September the 8th. And one of the pastors here said, "Why did you join on September the 8th?" And he said, "Hey, I'm just happy to be a part of a church that's excited about the future." I know. I'm excited too. Nocati, in 2018, the average attendance at Nocati was 279. Since we moved into the new building on Palm Sunday, so not the full year, but since we moved into the new building, our average attendance, average attendance is 341. That's an increase of 22%, which we are very grateful for. We also, there's more to these things than numbers. Every day, we're talking to you as pastors, sometimes in pastoral meetings, sometimes at the Grace Center. And I read notes, even just this afternoon, from people, some of you in this room, talking about the fact that your marriage was hanging by a thread. There are marriages in here that anger and all the rest, other kinds of emotions, were destroying it, and as you discovered the grace of God applied to your situation through ministers of the gospel at this church, God restored your marriage. There are people in this room who have given testimony, I just read it, that sexual sin had devastated your marriage, and because of ministry of the Word happening in this church, your marriage is restored, and you're experiencing joy in a way you never have before. There, I just read the testimony of someone in our church who was thinking about taking their own life, and a minister of the gospel at this church sat with them over a season and pointed them to Jesus and pointed them to the truth of the Word of God, and they have hope and joy restored to their life. This is what we're doing here. This is the kingdom of God, this is the righteousness of Jesus Christ, we get to do this together. The most important things in the world are happening at this church, they're happening in your lives, and it's just exciting to be a part of it. One final really exciting thing is the number of people in our church who are serving. I preached a message on serving a couple of months back, and they told me that our volunteers have really gone up since then. One of the most exciting things about that is the new people we have coming into the deacon ministry. We have about 110, 115 deacons in our church, all of them valuable, all of them precious. A number of deacons are returning to service this year, but tonight, one of the things that we get to celebrate is two new deacons who have not been ordained to the deacon ministry in this church before. And we get an opportunity to celebrate them and set them apart for ministry. Jim Bob Williams and Ryan Vickery. Yeah, you can go ahead and clap. I'm going to ask each one of them to come right down front and stand right down there because they love making eye contact with thousands of people. Jim Bob Williams is over here on my left, and if you are here with Jim Bob, would you stand so that we could recognize you? I know he's got family and friends. And Ryan Vickery over here on my right, if you're here with him, would you stand? These are two remarkable servants, I know that because we had more, but when we told them they had to stand in front of everybody, they bailed out, and these were the only two that were left. As you look at these men, I want to read to you the qualifications for a deacon. It's in 1 Timothy, Chapter 3, verses 8 to 13. And these qualifications are what we use to evaluate the fitness of these men and others who serve on our deacon board. They are God's standard for what must define a man who would serve on the deacon board. And I want you to look at these men and listen to how God would describe them. Deacons likewise must be men of dignity, not double-tongued, or addicted to much wine, or fond of sordid gain, but holding to the mystery of the faith with a clear conscience. These men must also first be tested, and then let them serve as deacons if they are beyond reproach. Women must likewise be dignified, not malicious gossips, but temperate, faithful in all things. Deacons must be husbands of only one wife, and good managers of their children in their own households. For those who have served well as deacons obtain for themselves a high standing and great confidence in the faith that is in Christ Jesus. One of the most amazing things about the Bible, one of the most amazing things about the church of Jesus Christ, one of the most amazing things about God, is that He sets apart as special office holders deserving of honor and dignity, a group of people called deacons, literally servants. It's a statement that the God of the universe esteems people who will serve. And one of the main ways to be a leader in the congregation of Jesus Christ is to be a person who would say, "I want to wear the title of deacon, I want to wear the title of servant." These are two men who have said they want to do that, and they have been evaluated by our deacons and by our pastoral team, and have been found to uphold the standards of deacon that I just read to you. I want to ask Todd Coleman, the chairman of our deacons, and Ryan Jones, the vice-chairman of our deacons, to come down, place hands on them. And as they come, I want to ask other members of our deacon board to come down as well. Surround these men. And we're going to engage in a time of setting these men apart, and of setting them apart in the best way we could, which is by committing them to the grace of God as they serve our congregation. which is by committing them to the grace of God as they serve our congregation. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come before you by the grace and on the authority of Jesus Christ, the King of kings and the Lord of lords. And we want to thank you for the life and servant hearts of Jim Bob and Ryan. As we look at these two men and evaluate their lives, we see in them men who are worthy of the title of deacon, men who mirror Jesus Himself, who took off His outer garment and washed the feet of His disciples. We serve a king and a lord who is a servant, and it's right that we would follow Him as servants. I thank you for these two men, that they want to do that. I thank you for the investment they want to make in this church. I thank you for the example they are to us of laying down our interests and our preferences and serving the bride of Jesus. I pray for each one of them. I pray for their families. I pray for their work. I pray for their involvement in our church. We pray that your hand would be on them and equip them for the work that you have for them. We thank you that they would want to make the investment in our church that they're demonstrating here they want to make. And we thank you that we get to lock arms with them and move forward into an exciting year of ministry as we serve Jesus and as we serve His bride. We thank you and pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen. It's a demonstration that the work of our church is going on. The work of service and ministry continues. It has been a remarkable day together. I know there's a lot of stuff left to do. There's a lot of great people in this room. And you can say hello to every one of them if you want to. We are, we're done, but you don't have to leave. You're welcome to encourage these two men and anybody else. And don't forget about our celebration of the pastors that we recognized at the beginning of the service in the dining hall as you leave. And until we're together next week, grace be with you all.